Meeting in order. Stand with vital allegiance.
Vital allegiance to the state of America.
And to every public like a perfectionist stance. On occasion. You can just. The majority and justice.
Will we currently state attendance?
All council members are present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Entertained motion to approve agenda.
So.
Second. Please call the roll.
Specker.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Doran.
Okay.
Ni Myers.
Aye.
For Askinson.
Aye.
Okay. Open forum, is there any member of the public who wishes to address council on an item not listed on tonight's agenda? We'll move on. Just have a discussion on liquor licenses, please. Bonnie Boss or city clerk will start presenting.
Mayor, council members, and members of the public, this presentation tonight is on the fees associated with our on sale liquor licenses, which would be our retail on sale liquor and our restaurant full service on sale liquor. On sale liquor licenses are related to consumption on site. Somebody cannot walk into this establishment, purchase a padded packaged product and take it and consume it elsewhere. Liquor is also defined as distilled or spiritual beverages. So that would be our blandies, our whiskeys, those sorts of things. And I would also like to mention a clarification before we get started. As I talked through this presentation tonight, we're going to mention population a lot. So the population for municipalities such as Brookings is as measured in the last preceding decennial federal census, with opportunities to review our population in even number years. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind as we go, because I wanted that to be clear for you. So the first license we're talking about tonight is the on sale liquor licenses. This is the license type, the one and only, which is regulated by population of the municipality. We currently have eighteen license fees. The initial fee for this new license of on sale liquor was set back in two thousand and eleven. That fee was set at twenty five thousand dollars. The state law does state that that license fee cannot be less than one dollar per resident. And the renewal fee is also set by state law, which cannot exceed one thousand five hundred dollars. The second type of license that we're going to talk this evening is a full service restaurant on sale liquor license. What best identifies this license is the fact that there is a sixty percent gross revenue of the restaurant derived from the sale of food and non alcoholic beverages.
Bonnie, can I ask a question now, I'm thinking of that sixty percent threshold there. Do you have to monitor that? How does that get done?
I do, I do monitor that every year when they submit their renewals. They are required to submit a report, which shows us their alcohol sales, their food beverage sales, along with the percentages of each.
Okay.
It's a report that they are able to pull from their point of sale system. So it's been audited by their accountants and then presented. Yeah, good question. Um, so we've gone through that, we know retirement's right there with Mr. Avery. This, just a point of clarification for you, the city code can be less or can be more restricted than state law than that less than. So for example, when we're talking about the sixty percent difference, a percentage requirement could be increased to seventy five percent, but we could not decrease it to forty percent. But if there's been some questions that were floating out there about, well, can the council do this or that? So we could go up to seventy five percent, but you could not go down to anything lower than sixty percent that is stated in state law. We currently have two license fees that utilize a full service restaurant license. That would be Boss's Pizza Ria and Whiskey Creek. And these licenses are not limited by population, there's no restrictions on these. The fee for these as well was set back in two thousand and eleven. The state law also identifies the fee for this license cannot be less than one dollar per resident. That fee that was set in two thousand and eleven was mandated by state law to be in effect for ten years. So we have passed that threshold, which is why we were having this conversation this evening. And then, so in two thousand and eight, the state issued these licenses opportunity for more liquor licenses in municipalities. In two thousand and eight, the city of Brookings passed a ordinance establishing what that procedure would be identified as. They also set the fee. And then. So the license opportunity was there in two thousand and eight, but we did not issue our first license until two thousand and twelve. And the fee was established, stated in law, to be set at or above the current or fair market value of a sale that was held between January of two thousand and three and January of two thousand and eight. So the city clerk staff pulled a list of comparables for you this evening. These are the first class cities in the state of South Dakota. This chart is in order by population, so the largest population will be at the bottom of the chart. And you will see the third column is the fee for these municipalities for on sale liquor licenses. And the fifth column, moving to the right, is the fee that these municipalities charge for the on sale restaurant license fee. You will, um, Sioux Falls is the only municipality that has reevaluated the restaurant liquor license fee, and they actually decreased the fee. They went down to one dollar per resident. On the flip side of that, if you look at the on sale liquor license fee, Sioux Falls has recently issued new on sale liquor licenses to the tune of almost four hundred thousand dollars. How that value came to be was Sioux Falls changed their process from a drawing process, like a bingo draw, to a bid process. So the highest bid was accepted and therefore that set the fee of the additional on sale liquor licenses they would issue.
Got a question on that. Do you know timeline wise for Sioux Falls, out of their seven licenses, was given out prior to the lower rate in Boston or after the other commission?
Um, they, I think that was after, because it would have been in two thousand and twenty-three that they reevaluated the fee. So that would have been just last year.
Okay.
And I know that they issued, I think it was in excess of five new on sale liquor licenses at the four hundred thousand dollar figure.
Bonnie, do you know what their restaurant fee had been prior?
I want to say it was two hundred and fifty thousand, but I'm not exactly sure.
Bonnie, the four hundred and eleven thousand, that was the highest sealed bid?
Yes.
It's all the rest of them had to pay that amount?
Correct.
Cool, alright.
But the ones that had their license earlier, they're locked into the rate?
Their grandfather didn't have the rate that they paid at the time they were issued the license. So they do not be charged in original spend.
At time of their renewal, did they have to go up to the four hundred and eleven or?
They, they law caps the renewal at one thousand five hundred dollars. Well, this has been paid for a new license. Yep.
And then, Bonnie, for the revaluation fee, is that since the first license was issued that they haven't reevaluated it? Or what years are you looking at for the revaluation?
So I don't have my data with me, but so Sioux Falls went through the ten year process and then they reevaluated, much like we're having the discussion tonight. Then they, the council there decided to decrease to the one dollars of population.
Sure.
So they decreased the price of the restaurant licenses.
So have the other towns that have not reevaluated, are they still in that ten year period?
Some of them are still in that ten year period, some of them are outside of it, and some of them haven't even considered talking about it yet, because they have their own concerns with their community.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Is one, sorry, go ahead. One thing I talked to you about before that I think is important for the community to know is on the list of the current licenses, a lot of the ones that are on sale licensed that are not full restaurants are actually full restaurants, where at least sixty percent of their income is probably coming from food. But you might want to explain how that happens, because they're not a full restaurant liquor license.
Right, so when somebody comes and they want to apply for an alcohol license, they know what type of license they wish to have for their business. Then the council can act on that license if you agree that they should have that license or not. Um, we have never had it and I do not know, maybe Steve can address further. I don't believe that the city council can say, Noah, you can't have this license, you have to have this one. Um, it's just a yes or no as the licenses come forward, that you can say yes or no on that license, but you can't tell them that they should go to this license.
Most of those people had those on sale liquor licenses for a long time. So there's no real incentive to change, because I can have this one, I already paid twenty five thousand for it and have it, or I can have another one for under. So there wouldn't be any, there's no real reason to want a restaurant.
Well, except that the other ones are.
Just because we want to have a nice column.
The maximum, there's a maximum number per city that you can have that aren't full restaurant. So all those licenses were used up when Boss or in Whiskey Creek wanted to open. So they had to buy the full ser, the full restaurant licenses.
Right, because when Whiskey Creek did come to town, there weren't no other licenses available, but they wanted to come to town. So the state adding this license allowed them to still have liquor along with their restaurant.
Bonnie, when was this set at twenty five thousand? It was prior to two thousand and ten.
This council.
Like two, two years prior to that?
Figure in two thousand and eleven.
Okay. Because I know there was discussion, just that I got on council at the time, and there were three licenses available, and we had six applications, it got very political. And one of the three licenses that we issued, that establishment went broke and we retrieved that liquor license. And Buffalo Wild Wings came to town and they honestly knew that they weren't going to be able to sell enough wings to make the sixty percent threshold. And so they asked for that liquor license. And I don't, I think we also had two other applicants that were asking that didn't get it the first time around. Uh, but we chose Buffalo Wild Wings. And then the restaurant licenses became available and it wasn't much longer after that was concrete or applied for the restaurant license.
Correct.
Boss's Pizza, just because of transferring liquor license, also they didn't have one. That's the reason why they took the restaurant license. I know it's difficult, I know we have, you've got more of a presentation here, is there any, any more questions on this particular line?
On, on this one, for the on sale liquor fee, if the establishment changes ownership, does the business retain that liquor fee and still just pay the annual renewal price? Or does it have to be kind of started over? How does that work?
Okay, so when a, an establishment says, I want to sell my businesses to such and such, and I put the paperwork forward for you to consider to transfer the liquor license as well, there's just a hundred and fifty dollar transfer fee from X business to B business. And you act on, yes, we agree with this transfer, or no, we do not agree. If there is a value associated with that liquor license and the sale of that business, we are not aware of that perceived cost. That is never disclosed to us. All that we know is that there is an application in front of us wanting to sell a business and a liquor license to the next person, and council has the option to approve or deny.
And in almost, probably in all cases, we approve them. But essentially, it can be transferred, we have to put our stamp on it, but it's not really something that's not going to happen. I mean, because there's always that thought, well, we don't really have liquor licenses, we have operating agreements, but in effect, they work the same way.
They do work the same way. And in Brookings, it is, I think it's most common that the most advantageous license to hold is the on sale liquor license, it's unrestricted, there's no food requirement. If you have that license, you want to restructure your business, you want to drop the restaurant and just have a bar, you can do that. If you have the restaurant liquor license and you want to drop the restaurant, you lose that sixty percent margin and the council can say you can no longer have that restaurant license. And now in essence, that business owner does no longer have a liquor license.
So I'm trying to think, like, the pros and cons of lowering that restaurant fee versus keeping it. And to me, it seems like if you lower it, you may be able to get more restaurants in town. But the people that already have that fee have already been charged that amount. So they're kind of stuck, because that's a hundred thousand dollars that's been invested in their company that they can't really give back. So those two businesses would be affected adversely. But if you lower it, it will also bring in more restaurants, which could adversely affect all the other restaurants that are on the other type of license as far as their business. So if you keep it the same, then nothing really changes, right?
Or the other thing you could consider too is raising the, for all new liquor license operating agreements from twenty five thousand up and, and make it all equal, but that one had a hundred thousand.
And that would really limit bars.
Well, if there's not available, so if there's.
There's, there's only so many, yeah.
I would guarantee you that the ones that were available, say, ten, fifteen years ago, when we went through this, they would have been willing to pay that. It's a one time fee, it's not like you have to pay it every year, because there's renewals, fifteen hundred, it's an initial investment.
Which would then make the existing seventeen license holders or eighteen.
Well, the.
Worth a lot of money, because those.
Right.
Licenses can then be transferred.
They would be valued at a hundred thousand, and if there's none available, it makes all of them valuable. The other thing about it too is, is the reason why the restaurant license is based at a hundred thousand, Steve well knows. Uh, we were forced to put it at that, because we had based on the last sale of an establishment that had alcohol. And bill of sale stated a hundred thousand dollars right on the bill of sale.
Was that stated as the value of the liquor license?
It was, the operating agreement was valued at a hundred thousand, correct?
That is correct. So, uh, you know, that's private information. But this particular statute required us to seek out that information and utilize it in order to set that fee. And so, you know, they cooperated and, and gave us that fee and we were at the use of.
I mean, look at Sturgis, they're at six hundred and fifty thousand, last liquor license that was sold, sold for six hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
We have a different setup here, we have operating agreements, but still, it's the same, it's got a value to it.
Any other questions on using this melody? Okay, moving on. Last fall, the Brookings area chamber conducted a survey of seven hundred businesses in Brookings. They had twenty-two responses of the comments that were given with those survey results for any of the packets. Um, just a couple items I'd like to highlight is that thirty-one percent said that the restaurant liquor license should remain at one hundred thousand dollars. And thirty-six percent said that the restaurant liquor license should be increased to one dollar per resident. Uh, some of the comments was, change the fee to seventy-five thousand dollars, they don't want to devalue the existing businesses, and they do not want to change the existing license fee.
Thirty-one percent of twenty-two is only seven.
Say that again?
If, if a thirty-one percent of twenty-two responded, that's not a whole, not a real big sampling.
But we were glad for the, to participate.
There.
Decided to participate, respond and provide a comment, much appreciated.
I see that we, on the survey link in our agenda, businesses that participated in that survey could indicate their name, not that many of them did, but we don't have a sense of all those twenty-two businesses, what sector they came from or.
I know we have.
I guess the reason I'm asking, it's twenty-two is not a great number, but of all twenty-two of them are in the hospitality industry, that maybe is a little better data for us.
There were a couple that were business owners.
I see a couple did choose to share their names, just not.
One, two, we had three that are current alcohol license holders. Not necessarily liquor, but they do have an alcohol license. And those, so they're the three that did get their names. But we were talking before about the, the population breakouts for the on sale liquor licenses. So this is the state law, which identifies how many licenses we can issue. So to better identify this, I put it in the next two spikes here, more of a chart form. So this is the population data as per the U.S. Census Bureau. So you'll see the decennial years in there, two thousand and ten, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and thirty. You'll see in even number year two thousand and twenty-two, which is our most recent population, we had a population of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. This was a growth from two thousand and twenty of six hundred and sixteen. So when you read state law, it says here we can use a fraction thereof. So the city of Brookings has entertained that, um, once in most recent history. So what this means is, we can use a fraction of the one thousand five hundred population to issue the next license. But we have to obtain the remaining of that fraction. So say we had six hundred and sixteen, we need to acquire the remaining seven hundred some population to get to the next available license before we can issue that next license. So Brookings did experience a good growth between two thousand and twenty-ten, because we had those four additional licenses issued in two thousand and eleven. And since then, it's been slow, but steady. Um, the last new on sale liquor license that was issued was in two thousand and eighteen. So putting all of this in a chart formation for you, you've got population on the left, on the left, and the number of licenses on the right. So we are allowed three licenses for the first one thousand population. So then you go to line two, and we've got fourteen licenses, which make up one thousand five hundred population per license. So this puts us at seventeen licenses. Then the next one down, where it's this population of one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven, this was the fraction thereof that we issued in two thousand and eighteen, that issued that license. So now we were at eighteen. The last license is, if we wanted to do the fraction thereof, we could use that and have license number nineteen. So there is one license for an on sale liquor license, so the council can decide to utilize for a business. And please keep in mind, if you do decide to do the fraction thereof, we will have to gain another one thousand seven in population to, before we can even think about license number twenty-one. Any questions on that? So for tonight, just to remind the council, you can take possible action tonight on giving direction to staff to prepare something to take forward to a regular council agenda, or you do not have to take action tonight at all, and you can bring action at a future city council meeting, if you so choose. Are there any questions?
Um, can you remind me for, when a restaurant is starting, um, and they're looking at a liquor license, can they find the cost of it online or some other way? Or do they reach out to you and do you have that contact with them to explain the pricing?
They do, they reach out to you right away and I talk to them about the pricing, I talk to them about the process involved in applying for a license.
Have you noticed with specifically the restaurant license or any other comments you'd like to provide? Have any individuals expressed any feedback on the pricing or questions about it?
No, no one has said or made any comments to me as far as the fee.
Any other questions? Tim Reed, I know you're on the, on the Zoom, would you like to make any comments?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, Tim Reed, I am the CEO of the Brookings Economic Development Corporation. You know, and our mission is to build an economy that supports a community vision of quality place to, a quality place to live, play and work. And of course, when you talk about quality place to live and play, um, restaurants are important, they're an amenity that, uh, people look for when they consider, you know, moving to town or, or coming or staying in town. And of course, we're always talking about workforce. So we do feel that having a community with good amenities, um, really can help us with attracting the workforce that we need in Brookings. So back in two thousand and nineteen, the BDC did a consumer survey report. And, uh, you know, we discussed that report when there was discussion about groceries. But in that report, there was also discussion, or in that survey and the following report, which by the way, is available on the BDC website, if you're looking for more detail. Restaurant variety was the number one reason that respondents from the survey went out of town for a restaurant meal. They were looking for a variety. The third, um, reason that people would go out of town included other, other air, other reasons for visiting the area, it was more about the total experience. You know, if they went to probably Sioux Falls to shop, or maybe, um, for some reason, they didn't go to Lowe's and they wanted to go to Menards, and so they stayed in Watertown and had a meal. And so that was, that was the third reason that folks lived or left out of town, uh, to have a meal. So the other thing that you have to consider is that, um, or what was asked of them is, what was your int, what would you be interested in seeing more of, what type of establishments? And the number one response was family restaurants. Eighty-five percent of the respondents responded very or somewhat interested in bringing in more family, uh, restaurants. The, uh, the fourth item that they talked about was fine dining. So there, seventy-one percent of respondents were very or somewhat interested in, in dining. I know increasing the, the amount of fine dining restaurants. But when you're looking at those numbers, I think it's really important to, you know, we talk about leakage. And if you took a look at the leakage data, uh, from two thousand and eighteen, that's in this two thousand and nineteen report, our leakage was only five and a half million dollars in food service. Um, and if you take a look to compare that, when you look at general merchandise during that same report, it was fifty-four million dollars. Um, and so you think about the difference there in how much is being lost, and they're basically about the same volume of, uh, what we think we could get in dollars for, whether it be for food service or for general merchandise, they were about the same. So we're really doing a pretty good job, we don't have that much leakage in Brookings. I also think it's important to, to point out that, um, four out of the top ten requested restaurants back in two thousand and nineteen normally have liquor. And so for the restaurants that people are looking at, liquor isn't, you know, for a lot of those restaurants, liquor is a necessary thing that they have. Um, you know, for example, people, um, I can't think of some of the restaurant names now, but there was quite a few that just, they, they don't serve liquor. Um, and so just take that all into account when you're thinking about, uh, what you'd like to do for these licenses. Now, the city economic master development or economic development master plan, you know, set out some goals. And one of the goals is attracting investment in Brookings. And the BDC is the lead entity on that. One of the strategies within that goal asks for retail and restaurant attraction plan, uh, for this year to get started with it. And so as we start to execute that plan, we will be asked about the availability and price of liquor licenses. And obviously, a lower cost for these restaurant licenses would be, you know, uh, more of an enticement to, to bring restaurants in. Now, also in the economic development master plan, the second goal was entrepreneurial sport, entrepreneurial support. Now, while there's not a specific strategy on restaurants within that, we do have many locally owned restaurants that we should support if they want to expand their offerings or start, or someone might want to start a new restaurant. And that hundred thousand dollar cost can be a barrier, um, for them starting their new restaurant. Or maybe it's a current restaurant that would like to, like to add alcohol to their offerings. So I, I just wanted to give you guys that information. I just had you, you know, when you're reviewing those, these costs, just take that into account. The economic development master plan would, would like to see us have an attraction plan for more restaurants. People do want more variety. On the other side of it, you know, we also know that we don't have that much leakage when it comes to restaurants. And so, and the other thing that I'd just like you to think about when you're looking at these, uh, prices is, what about that upstart entrepreneurial restaurant that we'd like to see get started in Brookings? Or our current, our current, uh, businesses that may want, our current restaurants that may want a liquor license? So if you just take that all into account, obviously, if you lower the price of the restaurant licenses, it could help us recruit new restaurants to Brookings. So I'll stand by for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Tim at the moment? I know we got one person here, would you like to make comments?
Uh, sure.
So.
Oh, my name's Kevin, I own pints and quarts. I would suggest not changing the current cost. To me, a hundred thousand dollars for a restaurant liquor license is not that big of a barrier to entry. I think there should be some, because liquor is somewhat regulated. So we should do something to just make sure everyone can't just all of a sudden start opening up restaurants and selling Jack Daniels all over town. I'm not, I don't come from like some wealthy. I was a swim coach. My wife was a school teacher. And we could figure out how to make it work to get a restaurant with the current pricing and everything. I think the next person who wants to take the leap can too. Because you're gonna get, the reality is, is you pay a hundred thousand for that restaurant liquor license. Fifteen, twenty, whenever you sell, you're getting that hundred thousand dollars back. It's an asset on your books. So if you guys were to lower the license today, all the restaurants, all the bars, the value of their business would drop immediately just because now the liquor licenses are cheaper. So one asset that we sort of have is now devalued. So that's, you know, that's something to think about. There's what seventeen licenses right now? There are eighteen for on-sale. So that's eighteen local businesses that will have their value dropped in a day. And then, you know, it was just going about it. It seems like there's unintended consequences. Like you talked about attracting restaurants, that's chains. Like they're lower the liquor license, now we're more attractive than another town for chain restaurants, which will hurt local businesses. Because if you go around right now, Tuesday night, there's probably, I know there wasn't a wait at Pints and Quarts when I left. I doubt there's a wait now. I doubt there's a wait at all these restaurants. Our town is not that big. It's a small little town with college students, and half the college students are on a meal plan and eat on campus. So, you know, yeah, sometimes on weekends when there's events, it's hard to get tables and places. But the three hundred and forty other days, there's not a lot of people around. And so do we really want to lower this thing and say, hey, we have the lowest restaurant liquor license around and try to attract some out-of-town chains? And then put a damper on local restaurants and locally owned businesses? I just think we should do what we can to help the locally owned businesses that are going about it. Everyone seem like making it work and not go out of our way to attract out-of-town, you know, more out-of-town national chains that ruin stuff, in my opinion. Because we can't compete with their marketing. Like, we can't, I can't put an ad for Pints and Quarts during the Super Bowl or, you know, during an NBA game. But you're at home watching anything, you're gonna see ads for all these restaurants. So people coming into town, that's one of their first reactions is, oh, let's go here because I know what it is. So I don't know if we should be, you know, enticing them even more to come to town. That's just how I feel.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Wayne, get a question?
Well, just to follow up on those same comments, I looked at this quite a bit. And I think all the facts tend to support the idea of leaving it the same. I mean, there's that initial impression that we have a hundred thousand is too much. But like Dylan just said, if you're gonna be in a full-service restaurant and you're prohibited from doing that because of that license fee, then you probably don't have the wherewithal to do it and be successful anyway. That might offend somebody, but I think that that's true. We've got other municipalities of our same size, and they're holding the line on their restaurant liquor licenses. But I don't know what the average is in average law, but it's gotta be right at the hundred thousand dollar mark. And you look back and a court determined that a fair market value for a liquor license in Brookings was a hundred thousand dollars. That was, you know, it's expired, but that was still a court ruling. It hasn't been, you know, it never was overturned. And I think a business, above all, they want to know what the rules are. And if the rule is that licenses cost a hundred thousand dollars, and that's where they came in at. They have some degree of assurance that we don't change the rules and make it, that's always, you know, disadvantage to them. So I just think there's, you know, in all fairness to everyone, leaving alone is the best policy. And then if you did say that we're gonna reduce our restaurant licenses to twenty-five or fifty, twenty-five, that kind of just pretty much opens the door for a whole lot of things to happen where you've never been able to get a license. You know, there's no license available now. Now there's unlimited license at twenty-five thousand. The argument is, well, they have to have food, but I would think that, you know, some people will figure out how to have a hamburger grill and a french fryer and then they're a restaurant. But so I think that's problematic too. That's just my two cents. But I think it's one of those things that it sounds like it's a really good thing for restaurants and small business to reduce that fee, but in the end, I don't think it is.
Councilmember Tilton Burn.
Oh, so first I just want to clarify something maybe that Councilman Avery said, and that is having a hamburger and a fryer doesn't actually make you a restaurant, correct? Because like there are stipulations on types of food. It has to be more than just fry orders, sandwiches, hamburgers. Okay. I think that's, no, that's okay. I just want to make sure you're all on the same page. I think it's an odd definition because I would kind of argue that having hamburgers and salads and sandwiches makes you a restaurant, but that's not for me to decide. I do have a question, and then I have one other comment, and that is, my question is, are malt and wine licenses are different from what we're discussing tonight, correct?
Correct, because those are fermented alcohol products. They have their own licenses to issue them. An unrestricted on-sale liquor license? You can still buy the fermented products, but the focus here is your distilled and your spirited wine.
What is the price on our, on the beer and wine license?
So beer is three hundred dollars for a new license, and it's a three hundred dollar renewal. And wine is a five hundred dollar new license fee and a five hundred dollar renewal.
My comment is that I think as I look at this, what I really ultimately at the end of the day think is that the on-sale liquor fee and the full-service on-sale liquor restaurant fee should be equal. You gain the same right to do the same thing with the exception of not having to prove food sales with the liquor fee. So regardless of whether we decrease the restaurant fee, increase the on-sale liquor fee, change them both, my opinion is at the end of the day, they should cost an equal amount since ultimately out there in the market, it's gaining the establishment owner the same right to serve liquor.
And if we raise that on the on-sale, we're really not, you know, everybody already has theirs except that one person or that possible one that we have. So it really wouldn't be a big impact anywhere. And it would make that one license possibly out there in the future more competitive. It would raise the value of everything.
And it sounds like what Kevin had said, you know, his business, which paid twenty-five thousand dollars originally for the fee, is already valuing their liquor fee at a hundred thousand dollars because that's what the available licenses are priced at. And I'm sure other businesses are doing the same. They're valuing their on-sale liquor fee at a hundred thousand dollars or maybe even higher, as Kevin's indicating in the back. But I think these business establishments, they know that if a new one were to be purchased, unless somebody gave up their current on-sale liquor fee, they'd have to pay a hundred thousand dollars. And so I think the value out there in the restaurant industry is already kind of set at a hundred thousand because that's what we're charging for the available ones.
Just to clarify, Bonnie, the restaurant fee is one-time fee, right?
Correct.
So I look at it this way, the restaurant license actually is more of a detriment to prove that you have, I mean, you have to, you have to make that threshold or you lose it.
Correct.
So they have more of a burden than an actual liquor license does. I see no reason why we, I'm kind of with Holly on the same thing. I'd like to see us equal amount. Because, I mean, when you apply for an alcohol license, you apply it for alcohol, period, and they're limited. I mean, they actually, as far as I'm concerned, should be more valuable. You know, I mean, a restaurant license, anybody, as long as they can prove that they can serve sixty percent food as a full-service restaurant, it's a detriment. It's a threshold that sometimes can be difficult to make. I would assume Buffalo Whirlings couldn't do it. They admitted when they applied for the alcohol license we retrieved back from Shablon. They said they couldn't make it. They were honest about us. We know we're not even gonna try. We can't sell enough whigs. And so they were after that liquor license. And, you know, even the gentleman that's here purchased it from Sullivan Family. They admitted too. They wanted a liquor license because they were gonna do a full-service restaurant, and they did. They did pretty well. But they said, you know, there's gonna be a day that we may not make that. You know, that threshold is a restaurant, so we would prefer to be able to be a bar if we have to. So I remember those comments way back when. But I guess I'm in the same, I would rather we didn't make a decision tonight. I want the public to chime in on this. I want the businesses to chime in on it. I would rather we didn't do any action tonight, set it aside. We don't have to do a motion to do that. We can just do nothing. But I'd like the, at least for, let's say, the next month, to maybe come back and address this, say, the first meeting in April and see if we actually want to do something. And give it a month, let people digest this, think about it.
Do you know if any of the other municipalities are considering to review theirs?
Not at this time. Like, I'm most of them are not. Their council is not wild about entertaining changing the existing fees just for the municipalities that have issued licenses and the fear of those licenses getting devalued for those businesses. And a couple of them were frankly unaware that the ten-year timeframe had been met. I do have a comment from Jim Gardner. I sent it to the council, but he did appreciate if I could read it for the record. So this is from Jim Gardner. He is the president of Whiskey Creek Wood Fire Drills. And he says he would want the council to know that if they lower the liquor license fees to get more licensed holders in the city, they should be sure to refund dollars to those of us who paid more than they proposed for the new licenses. Otherwise, it would be very unfair to those of us who thought it would be a limited license situation and invested several million dollars to locate in Brookings. Brookings is a small community and business is not exactly booming compared to their other locations and markets in Nebraska and Kansas.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Tim, do you have any other comments or questions?
No, the only thing, Mr. Mayor, I want to make sure that I was clear on, just so everybody's, we do not have that much leakage in our food service. That was surprising to me. And I said that before, five point five million dollars is not a lot of leakage when we consider general merchandise. We have a leakage of fifty-four million dollars. And so I think that needs to be taken into account, especially when you hear from some of the current, you know, owners of, you know, of restaurants and bar restaurants that, you know, that they're not necessarily having that high a sales. And that probably shows that when you don't have that much leakage. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Any questions, comments? All right, so we'll end that with the idea that we'll move on and then ask the public to chime in. I really want comments from the public before we make a decision on this. Councilmember Tilton Burn.
Do we want, in order to make sure that we do revisit it in a month, is there some sort of consensus we could reach that says in a month, we will add this to an agenda?
Okay, make a motion and do it back to the first meeting in April? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any other comments on that? Please go ahead.
Tilton Burn. Wendell.
Hi.
Avery.
Hi.
Darren.
Hi.
Niemeyer.
Hi.
Raskinson.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
So the next question I've got to ask Bonnie is, do we have a meeting the first Tuesday of April or is it that election night?
That's election night, so it would actually be.
It would have to be the next meeting after.
Tuesday.
Okay.
First meeting of April.
The first meeting of April.
All right. Any other items or topics anybody wants to bring up? Councilmember Wendell.
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of just want to ask a clarifying question about study sessions. And I think the part of it may have just been common practice versus what we're allowed. But I sort of have the understanding that we did not take action on items in study sessions and sort of have the understanding that we weren't allowed to take action. Actually, we just took, I'm not necessarily talking about that. I mean, more like a, I have sort of had the sense that this is just a learning experience and open discussion, that we wouldn't take substantial action. Is that just been practice or are we?
It'd be just practice.
Okay.
It's really a council policy as to what you're comfortable with, but there's no limitation, you know, on an item that's on the agenda that council could always take action.
Okay. I just sort of am most comfortable, I think, we set sort of a standard in study sessions that we don't put up significant action in study sessions.
Well, this isn't even a live show, so, I mean, it's being recorded. So I want, I mean, I think what we did is the right thing.
Sure.
I know that we've done some things where we've said, yes, let's put this on the agenda next time. I don't know as if we've ever actually made a motion and did something from the time that I've been in council.
Yeah, I think you want to have, you know, a reasonable level of flexibility in case there are issues that need, really need to be addressed. And maybe, you know, if the policy needs to be, you know, examined as to what we had for a policy, we can, staff can certainly do that. But I'd say the council is free to set whatever policy that you want on action items, obviously. You know, there's not a lot of room for the public to participate in on the topics that we might take action on in this room, for example.
Can I ask a similar clarifying question? And that is, even the motion that was just made and voted on, could that have just simply been consensus rather than an actual motion and vote? Or does it actually have to be a motion and vote it on?
No, it could be consensus. Staff, you know, prefers a motion just for clarity and just so that there's a record. And if someone's reading the minutes, they'd be able to see that and have the date there. And consensus could reach the same result, but I just think it's nice to have formality once the law, clarity.
I kind of did a motion on this just because when we do future topics and discussion, I felt that was probably good to put on the record that we were going to discuss it in the future and state a date. So people can chime in either way or attend. That way it's.
I think back to the, you were asking, you know, for public comment. I would like to hear public comment on Holly's proposal of bumping up, you know, the full service. I don't know if now's the time to say that, but I think that's an idea we should consider.
That's what we're kind of waiting for right here is for people to say, yeah, we'd like to see them equal or change them or don't do anything.
Right.
Okay, any other topics for discussion in the future? I don't have an agenda for next meeting. Do you have an idea of what we all have on there? I know I stated last meeting.
I do not.
Thank you. Here we go. All right, so next meeting, we've got Students Association Report, twenty-twenty-three full year report, financial.
I'm not sure. That would be coming from Ashley.
Okay. Possible mayor of state and the city. You better be moving on that if I do. Okay, and then we have one contract bid award for Chip Seeling Project. Then other business, we currently have any second meetings? We should have one.
There should be one.
There's a budget amendment.
Yes.
And then other business, we got expanding Traffic Safety Commission. Committee Action on On-sale Liquor License Fee, possibly, which we refer to to April. And then we're looking at an annexation. And that's gonna be just a one-time hit on the meeting, so it's a decision we make that night. It's no first or second meeting, so. And then progress report from the Assistant City Manager, and then that's it. Nothing else? Entertaining motion to adjourn. Second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So opposed, we need adjourned.